Good evening, welcome to the Wednesday, August 5th, 2015 City Council meeting. Could I have the roll call, please?
Salem Derby.
President.
Dan Hagan.
President.
Jennifer Hayes.
Here.
JP Kuzensky.
Here.
Joe McCoy.
Here.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Tamara Smith.
Here.
Joy Winnie.
Here.
Nathan Ziegler.
Okay, could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If there's anyone here from the public who would like to address the council for something other than what's on the public hearings, please feel free to come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, everyone, my name is Denise Riggs. I'm from 88 Pleasant Street, Southampton, and I initiated the naming petition for the boardwalk, and together with four other individuals from the community, as well as a couple of small businesses, I helped gather all of the signatures. I wanted to personally and publicly thank Dan for sponsoring this request, and if it does go forward, John Mason from the Parks and Rec suggested that a couple of us get together and think of a name and bring that forward, and we'd be glad to do that.
There's actually a procedure that's outlined as far as naming committee, so there's-
I'm aware of that, yes.
Yes, okay.
But he said that he's been on many of those and that they take suggestions from the outside, so-
Of course, yeah, of course, yeah, there's a whole-
...letting me know that we will do that, and we will suggest a name.
Great.
And if you would like, I would be glad to serve on the naming committee if it does move forward, that's all.
Sure.
You're going to cover that, right, Jennifer?
Yeah, sure.
He's going to cover that, this is actually your agenda.
I was told it wasn't up for public discussion, so-
Well, this is public speak time, so we don't have a discourse with the councilors, and I'm probably walking a fine line right here, but I just wanted to make sure you understood that there already is a procedure in place-
Yes.
-which basically follows what you are at requesting.
Yes.
There will be a panel, actually, I should say now, there's a committee, if the council votes to approve this, there's a committee of five people, two appointed by the mayor, three appointed by myself, and then that committee gets together and works on names, and has public discourse, a public hearing, public input, and then a name is proposed to the council, if that's the decision is, and that's, it goes from there, so.
Right.
So there will be five people put together, and certainly, you know, Mayor and I will consider your names amongst others for the committee.
Okay.
Great.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Anyone else from the public like to address the council for anything that's not on the public hearing agenda tonight? Okay, let's move on. We do have actually, this I guess came from a discussion that both Counselor Hayes and Counselor Smith had running into our Public Health Agent, that sometimes the council doesn't have the opportunity just to hear some from department heads, so the Public Health Agent was interested in speaking to the council and not be limited as far as only being able to get out there, public speak time, so we actually put her on the agenda tonight, so she requested to be able to talk to us a bit about her department and what's new there, and this, because she's on the agenda, we have the flexibility to ask her questions, so be it. So Jackie Duda, if you'd mind coming to the podium, that would be great.
Well, thank you for giving me this opportunity to be invited as opposed to public speak time, and I hope that was the right decision on my part to ask for that. I am Jackie Duda, and I'm your health agent here in East Hampton, and I thought that it would be a good thing if I could just introduce myself, especially to some of the council people who have been elected since I first met with you, three years ago, and also because it gives me the opportunity to meet the public through our community television, and that is a wide audience with a lot of readership, if you will, and so that's sometimes the best way to reach the public with a public health message, is to just come on ECTV, so this is my eight minutes. First, I wanted to just explain a little bit about what a Board of Health is, and how it's organized, and why it exists. In Massachusetts, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 111, established Boards of Health to oversee the public health needs of a community, and in that, they gave Boards of Health not only vast responsibilities, but also great powers to enforce those responsibilities, and to oversee public health in a community. In the old language, it said that Boards of Health shall look into all sources of filth and disease in their community, and of course, that's spread out to every imaginable task you can think of, because everything in some way is related to public health. Here in East Hampton, we have, some of our broad functions are to adopt local regulations. Chapter 111 gives Boards of Health the power to create their own regulations, and we have a number of regulations in East Hampton created by the Board of Health that we also enforce. We also enforce all the state, local, and federal regulations that are public health-related, and that have us as the enforcing entity written into that regulation, and there's a great number of those. We investigate complaints, we conduct inspections, we issue permits and licenses, and we make referrals to other agencies, and to the Department of Public Health when we can't handle something on our own. So our office is responsible just broadly for supporting the wellness of a community, and for preventing hazards and diseases from spreading in a community, and we've chosen a motto here in East Hampton, which is that we are envisioning a healthy East Hampton. That's the motto of our local health department. We're envisioning a healthier community, and this community is significantly healthier than it was 20 years ago and 40 years ago, so I'm envisioning it to even get healthier. I'd love to see a day when we only had 5 percent of the population smoking cigarettes, for instance. Among our areas of responsibility, I'll just read you the short list. Indoor air quality, ensuring safe drinking and swimming water, emergency management, environmental health, ensuring healthy housing, operating immunization clinics, planning and preparing for public health emergencies, which we spend up to 50 percent of our time on in previous years, keeping families safe from outbreaks of communicable diseases, permitting and inspecting food establishments, children's and family camps, swimming pools, tattooing parlors, tanning establishments, inspecting septic systems and wells, responding to nuisances about trash, odor, noise, lead paint, and animal bites. So that's kind of it in a nutshell, but if we had a nuclear plant in town, we'd be responsible for radiation poisoning as well. So it all depends on what's in your community. So we have three employees in the health department, that is myself, I work for 34 hours a week, and I'm the health agent, I'm kind of the boots-on-the-ground of the health board, and then Tricia Abbott, who is our public health nurse, she's an RN with many, many years of public health nursing experience, and public health nursing is its own field, it's a very broad field, it's very different from other nursing fields. So a specialist in public health is really valuable, and Tricia's a specialist. And we have a 10-hour-a-week assistant, administrative assistant, her name is Jackie Sinkowitz. We made a rule that you have to have the name Jackie to work in our department, and without her, really, we'd come unglued a lot of days of the week. She kind of binds us all together and helps in a way that allows us to perform our work. So Tricia Abbott, just to outline some of her specific tasks, these are things that I really can't do myself, because I don't have a nursing background, and, you know, I don't know her job. She oversees the mandated TB program in town, and she follows any tuberculosis cases and any latent, people with latent tuberculosis. So last year, for instance, she covered and followed four people with latent tuberculosis, meaning she met with them every month, and sometimes she meets with these patients for up to nine months before they're finally clear of any concerns about tuberculosis returning. She also investigates communicable diseases in the city. Anytime you go to a doctor, and you have any kind of a test that is what we call a reportable disease, that laboratory reports that disease to the State Department of Public Health, and that information then comes back to the community where you live. So here in East Hampton, she investigated 36 cases of communicable disease last year, and then she oversaw another 96 cases of other lesser kinds of illnesses that were reported to her from the Department of Public Health, and we communicate with them daily on a secure private database through a computer, and also on the phone, but most of it is done through a computer. And she immunized 220 people last year, mostly for flu, but also for other things. These included our schoolchildren, teachers, city employees, fire and police personnel, me, she finally got me, and any other city residents that walk in the door that ask for any kind of shot. If we have the serum, we'll give the immunization. It's all free of charge, we don't charge the public for any of this, and we get most of, not all of, the vaccine, free from the Department of Public Health. She's also an important advisor to me, so whenever I have any kind of medical-related question, I sit down with Tricia, and she informs me. She's also the coordinator for the Non-Attuck Medical Reserve Corps, are any of you familiar with the Medical Reserve Corps? We call it the MRC for short. This is nationwide, it's a federally funded program, we administer it out of our office here in East Hampton, and the Medical Reserve Corps is a group of medically trained volunteers who are trained by us, and they're, we give them background checks, inquiry checks, and we kind of register them as volunteers, and then they're in our volunteer unit, so that when we have any kind of emergency, where we have to call out volunteers, for instance, if we were going to have a flu clinic where we had to immunize the whole city, for instance, in some kind of emergency, or if we had a shelter, and we had to staff that shelter 24/7, we would use, in part, Medical Reserve Corps volunteers. So Tricia's one of the coordinators for our local unit of that, and she also works with our own animal inspector, Joe McCoy, Counselor McCoy, who is our animal inspector here, and she coordinates with him any animal bites. The animal inspector handles the animal aspect of that, Tricia handles the people aspect of that. So if an animal can get tracked down that did the biting, and we find that it's rabid, Tricia takes care of them getting rabies shots, and follows through to make sure that they do that. And then there's my job, which I tell you, if you want a fascinating job, you want my job, because it never stops. It never stops changing, it's always fascinating, it's sometimes alarming, and it teaches me something new every single day. So you kind of already have a sense of what I do, you know, I do food inspections, and I inspect all the other things as well. In 2015, so far, calendar 15, I've done 135 inspections already this year. Of those, most were housing, 56, 41 were nuisance complaints, very high number of those, 27 were food, and the rest were camps and pools and tattoo parlors and the like. In addition, I review plans with new restaurant or food establishment owners, because the code requires a plan review, so that we know that there's proper equipment, there's proper refrigeration space for the meals they're serving, and so forth and so on. I also look at all stormwater management programs for private properties, for instance, Parsons Village has their own stormwater maintenance program, and that has to be approved by the Board of Health, as well as a city engineer, before they can proceed. So I've reviewed that, I look at new septic system plans, and I also inspect septic systems after they're constructed, I actually have quite a large background in that area. I'm also currently participating in the Hampshire Hope, which is the opioid task force that is led by North Hampton, and East Hampton, North Hampton, and other communities are part of this, we're trying to address this whole epidemic of opioid abuse, and I participate in the School Wellness Committee as well, we meet about every couple of months to look at the foods that children are eating in our schools, and other practices that affect their health. And I appear a lot at Housing Court, that's one of the unfortunate time wasters that I have. And my personal favorite is actual public health work. Last year and this year, we received grants from Cooley Dickinson Hospital, I wrote grants, and we got the money, and we've gotten now about over $40,000 from Cooley Dickinson Healthcare. And we've used that money to do sidewalk surveys, to have quit-smoking classes, to address smoking with teens, to do conferences for landlords of private housing, to try to encourage them to go smoke-free in their housing. A lot of this has been tobacco work, some of it has been healthy eating work, we supported the Community Centers Kids Summer Bag Program last year, we also did a number of food demonstrations, we produced videos from those food demonstrations, and it goes on and on and on. So every year, I get to do a little actual real public health work to try to promote the community health. And so I did talk to somebody this morning who did really say they quit smoking as a result of our most recent program, so that's always exciting to get a little bit of feedback. For those who don't know, we're located down in the lower level, down in the basement, and we're frequently in, but also frequently out, and love to talk to anybody anytime about any concern they have, and help you in any way. And we're also on Facebook, so I'm going to promote this tonight, if I may, just ask if any of you are on Facebook to please consider making a friend out of us, and to also inform you, we have a vacancy on our Board of Health, so if you'd pass the word, we'd love to have somebody interested in the community health and in the policies. It's not a lot of work, it is a meeting once a month for a couple hours, maybe, maybe more, maybe less, and anybody who's interested in that should give me a call, and I'll tell them more about that responsibility. So I don't think we have any more time, but if we do-
I would like to ask a question.
Sure, I'd love that.
Are there any questions for Jackie over here?
No, I just want to say thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I do have two. Number one, did I hear right that any East Hampton resident can get a free flu shot downstairs?
Absolutely.
Okay.
While the supplies last.
Okay. And then the next question I had, remember earlier on, we had talked about changing the needle exchange program to paid. Have you seen, has that affected the drop-off in needle, has that affected the numbers dropped off the needles?
Well, we don't know what the numbers were before, because people didn't pay for them. We, that appearance you're talking about was a couple of years ago, when I came before the council and asked for a revolving account to support the new Sharps program, and that was being proposed, because communities around us were all charging for Sharps, and if we were the only free one, that might be a little runaway cost, so we were concerned about that. So we did start a pay-for program, and I really can't say whether that discouraged people or not. A lot of people came in and didn't like it, and we've since discontinued it, at the mayor's request, and at the request of the police and fire chiefs. They didn't feel that charging the public would encourage people to return needles, particularly some of those needle users who are not diabetic, for instance, and so to try to reduce the number of needles, the police were finding in the parks, for instance, and the cemetery, and in other public places, we thought it needs to go back to being free again. And so now, people who want to return Sharps can do so again at that metal kiosk, it's now again located 24/7 in the Public Safety Building lobby.
Good, yeah. That was my concern, I was wondering, that population that was so important feel comfortable dropping off needles, would maybe not, because, I'm glad we've gone back to that, so.
I don't know, that was the police chief's perspective, and I trust his knowledge on that matter, yeah.
Any other questions for the, just one quick one.
I know one of the most contentious things you do sometimes, inspections, and I don't expect a specific number, but how much is complaint-driven versus just, I assume you go on a rotation of certain, like, food establishments, you know, what, or is it both?
75, 80 percent of it is complaint-driven.
Okay.
When I said I did 56 housing inspections, all but one of them were as a result of a complaint of a tenant. The other one was a preoccupancy inspection requested by the owner of the property for a housing allowance program grant, you know, one of the subsidies, and they have to have a health department inspection in order to get that. So they're all driven by complaints, most of them.
Thank you.
Just a quick question on the Sharps program. It's not necessarily for exchange, but for drop-off also?
Only for drop-off. We do not do a needle exchange program.
For drop-off, so, and it could be, someone has a medical issue?
Sure. People are injecting vitamins into themselves, people are diabetic, people are injecting their pets, cats and dogs are diabetic and have other health concerns, needles come in from all kinds of reasons. And what I always found was amazing, is that when that law was passed saying that you cannot put needles in the regular trash anymore, people complied. People came with bags and bottles of needles, saying, "Where can I dispose of these safely?" Which I thought was heartwarming.
Along those same lines, because I've been seeing on Facebook, social media groups, if someone, if someone did see a discarded needle in the city of East Hampton, what would be the protocol?
I'm not certain, but I think that many people call the fire department.
The fire department?
They call the dispatch.
Okay.
And they send someone out to pick it up safely. I don't know if that's the official protocol, I know that I've heard that that happens.
Okay.
I know that if I saw a needle-
Yep.
-I would very cautiously dispose of it, and I would probably not touch it. For instance, if I had that big gulp container-
Yep.
-I'd empty it, and I'd scoop the needle up and put it in that, and then I'd probably bring it to a place for proper disposal.
Okay.
The key is never to touch it.
Okay.
Not with bare hands. And in our own office, when we had this needle program, because you also have to be ready for what if something breaks open, and you have needles all over the floor, so we've had training around that, universal precaution training, and spill training, and we also had a very expensive set of puncture-proof gloves, and we also bought a couple of sets for the Fire and Police Department, because they're handling those. So with those, even if you scooped up needles, and you had one coming at you, it's not going to puncture these gloves, because they're specially made for that purpose.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, too.
Great. Actually, Counselor Rist, pay attention to me, I skipped over a portion of the agenda here, so I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the minutes of July 8th, 2015.
So move second.
Okay, motion second, approve the minutes of July 18th, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain.
Abstain.
Two abstentions, okay. Motion passes, thank you.
Move that, we open the public hearings.
Second.
Okay, we have motion, a second, open the public hearings, all those in favor.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion passes. Counselor Hayes.
Hello. So we're having utility pole location hearing, and I believe there's somebody here from Eversource to talk about this, so if you'd like to come up to the podium, please state your name and your organization. We're going to move on these individually, so if you could just run through, like, which street, which pole is on, that would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Jerry Mullingasky, I'm with Eversource Electric out of East Springfield, and we have, in fact, submitted two petitions to the city. Both of these are in conjunction with the work that's being done around town to install a new circuit. I don't know which one you want to start with, we have one in for Park Street and one for Line Street.
That would be great, thank you.
The Park Street location is to relocate an existing pole, that pole is currently located on the westerly side of Park Street, the current location is on the northerly side of Greenwood Court, and it abuts parcels that belong to the academy. And the existing pole, the construction that we have there is causing that pole to lean over, and it's also very, located very close to the corner of the curve, and it has been noted by both the Williston and Town Public Works folks that that pole has been hit before by trucks trying to make that corner. So what we're looking to do, both for the installation of this project, and to help alleviate the leaving pole and the traffic hazard that it is causing, is we're looking to relocate the existing pole approximately 75 feet southerly to the south side of Greenwood Court, in line with the existing poles on Park Street. This has been looked at by the facilities folks from the academy, and also by Mr. Gracia, and he sees no conflicts with the relocation. That would also entail what other, Verizon, and any other cable companies that are on that pole, the existing pole would naturally be installed at the new location, and the old pole be removed.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions about this location of pole? Okay, I guess-
Is there anybody else in the public that wants to speak to this particular pole?
Okay.
Seeing none. Okay, I would like to move to approve the request to relocate one jointly-owned utility pole on Park Street, westerly of Greenwood Court, in accordance with Plan Number 6A520584 to reduce any traffic hazard.
Second. Any questions? I have a question, Barb, I know in the past, we always make the mention about reserving municipal, is that on, is that in that motion, does it need to be in that motion?
It's on the paper.
Okay, but, okay, it's on the motion, okay.
We could add that approval includes the agreement to reserve space for one cross-arm at a suitable point on each of said poles for fire and police signal wires belonging to the municipality, and used by exclusively for being a support.
Right, as long as it's, as long as we're legally there.
We're approving the order, and the order is-
Right.
Okay. Any other questions before we vote on this? Okay, all those in favor.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion passes.
Okay, our next on the agenda is the Main Street pole, please.
Oh. The cards that, huh, the cards that I received for the hearing this evening were for Park Street and Line Street, but we do, we did have a petition in for Main Street also, and I can speak to that.
Yep, we have the Main Street near Campus Lane, and we've scheduled a public hearing for that one as well.
Okay, great.
We thought we'd bundle them together, so that you could-
Okay, that's perfect. So do you, can I ask, do you have the Line Street one tonight, too?
We do.
Oh, okay, great, perfect. The one on Main Street is in front of the bank, the-
East Hampton Savings.
East Hampton Savings Bank, and as you've probably noted, the poles that we are replacing currently, there is only one pole remaining, which is, oh, thank you very much, there is only one pole that I believe hasn't been set there, maybe two, this being one of them, the existing pole that's adjacent to the drive, the driveway to the bank, I'm not sure if that's the entrance or the exit to the bank-
That's the exit.
-but it's currently about three or four feet off the edge of the driveway, so it does pose some visibility problems with cars exiting the bank. That is not why we're moving it solely, we're moving it in a southerly direction, or down Main Street, towards Union Street, and the purpose of that is because the existing pole location has what we call a reverse corner on it, so the guying would actually end up in the roadway in Main Street, which is physically impossible. So we're looking to move this pole, the existing pole, about 26 feet, you know, towards Union Street, on Main Street, with the intent of placing it in a location where we can guy entirely across the street as we currently do, and that guy would hit an existing pole on the, the directions get me here, on the west side of Main Street, between the attorney's office and Number 35, which is an apartment complex. And we can hit that pole there with the guying on the property line, and not have any guys that will be obtrusive to any pedestrian traffic or vehicular traffic. And also, what this does by moving this pole this distance, it lines us up straight with the poles headed towards Union Street, and again, the intent of that is to reduce any guying that would cause an obstruction to pedestrians or traffic. So by moving it that distance, the purpose is twofold, to improve the guying, and to straighten out the line of the, you know, the line of the new poles that are being installed. I did speak with the facilities manager from the bank, he did have conversation with the bank manager, I believe, or bank management, and I stated that if there were concerns, I'd be glad to come out and, you know, look it over, and see if there could be any adjustments that would accommodate any problems they had with it, and I did not hear back, so I'm assuming that they were okay with it. It does place it in the front of the bank, but it places it between two windows, there's a brick portion there in the building, so it's not direct, it is in their front lawn, but unfortunately, with the overhead construction, you know, no matter how we place them, they're gonna, some poles are gonna end up, you know, probably-
We did actually receive a letter from the East Hampton Savings Bank.
You did, and-
And they said they had no- And they said they had no problem with the pole location.
Okay, yeah, I mean, they are gaining in that it won't be as close to the driveway, and they're like, as I've already stated, some of the traffic concern will go away.
Yeah.
But, and there will be no guy, you know, associated with this pole in their yard. It'll be entirely across Main Street. I guess that's the best I could explain it.
Okay, thank you. And anyone from the public who would like to address counsel on this pole location? Okay, so if you can still stay there, probably one more, by Counselor Hayes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to... Which one am I on? Main Street. A motion to approve the request to relocate one jointly-owned utility pole on Main Street near Campus Lane in accordance with Plan Number 6A520761 to approve alignment and guying.
Second.
Okay, motion a second to approve the Main Street pole relocation. Any additional comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes.
So then, now we're to Line Street.
Okay. This pole, again, is associated with the new circuit. It's very close to the... Well, it is the first pole out of the substation that will carry the new conductors, which will cross Line Street and head out Gun Road on the South Hampton side and continue up Coleman Road. This pole is needed to make that transition out of our property in the front of the substation and cross the road to get to the existing lines on the South Hampton side of the road. So it's an intermediate pole for those new conductors. It is located on frontage of land that is owned by our company. It's behind the walkway. Again, it has been reviewed by the Public Works Department, and there were no concerns. And it's about 215, 260 feet northerly of the intersection of Phelps Road. There would be no guying on it, and I guess that's about the explanation of it.
Yeah, that one seemed really straightforward.
Yeah.
If anyone from the public would like to address counsel concerning this pole location? No, okay, back to you, Counselor Hayes.
All righty, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request to place one solely-owned utility pole on Line Street approximately 216 feet north of the intersection with Phelps Street in accordance with Plan Number 6A421151 for a new electrical circuit.
Second.
Motion a second to approve of the Line Street pole. Any additional comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would just personally like to say how we are doing a lot of work in town, and this is just myself talking, but working with your Public Works and Parks Department and yourself and the board, I appreciate, you know, the attention that you've paid and the considerations that you've given us, because I know this is a lot of work in town. And we're doing our best to cause as little disruption as we can. Not as much.
No, likewise, you've been really helpful, because we had a couple of, you know, I had a couple of constituents that were awfully concerned with the power outage, and you were really great about calling them and talking and explaining, so.
And, you know, lastly, I won't stand up here, but the trees that we took down, I mean, you know, when we took them, there were very few trees along Main Street, but I don't know how many folks had a chance to see the condition of those trees, but it was frightful. You could drive a Volkswagen through them, they were so hollowed out. They may have stood for another 50 years like that, but again, it was, you know, the town was very considerate in allowing us to take those down when not everyone wants to see even a tree of that caliber go. But I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you again.
Move the public hearings be closed.
Second.
Motion a second to close public hearings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. As we go down to Mayor Communications, Mayor Kager. She's all set, okay. Committee is Rules, Government, Relations, Counselor Risk. Do you want to move the new business?
Yes, I'd like to move that the Administrative Code 15-4 amend the name of the ECA Subcommittee and Grants Committee be moved to the Rules Committee for review.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, motion a second to move the Administrative Code 15-4 to Rules Committee. Additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes.
I will need to speak to my fellow committee members to set a meeting and to get the City Arts people... We need a public hearing on it, too, so it probably won't happen until later this month.
Okay. Did you want to introduce the citizen petition?
Yeah, let me also make a motion under New Business, according to the ordinance, to accept the petition to name the board rec as submitted this evening. And also make a motion that, as part of the motion, that the mayor and president submit to the council a naming committee at their earliest convenience.
Second. Motion a second to approve the naming committee formation. Again, as I said, it's kind of out loud. There's two appointed by the mayor, two by myself.
Three by myself, I'm sorry.
We had, Mayor and I had spoken before, and so anyone from the public who is interested in serving on this committee, please either send a letter of intent either to the mayor or the city clerk's office, and we'll accumulate the people who are interested and put together the five-person committee. So if you're interested, please send some letter of intent to the city, then.
It's a motion you have to vote on.
Oh, so there was a motion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes, then. Thank you. Finance, Counselor...
Oh, that's right.
Are you done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay. Counsel Finance, Counsel Hagan.
There's a few items of the... First of all, our next Subcommittee meeting is going to be next Wednesday, August 12th, at 6:00 PM in Room 1. We'll take up some of the items that are in New Business tonight. First, I'd like to move to Subcommittee, a request by the mayor to dissolve the kennel donation fund and move the proceeds to the Hayden Dog Fund.
Second.
Okay, motion a second to move to Finance, request to dissolve the kennel donation account and move proceeds to... What did you say?
The Hayden Dog Fund.
To the Hayden Dog Fund, okay. And just little comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes.
A second item from New Business I'd like to move is a request from the, I guess it's from the mayor also, rescinding the borrowing authorization, which was for the promenade, and I'd like to move that to committee also.
Second.
Yeah, motion a second to move to Finance, request from the Finance Director to rescind two past borrowing authorizations. Additional comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes.
And then I have three appropriations that I'll do a first reading on tonight. The first is an interdepartmental transfer of $1,295. It is to be transferred from the reserve fund in that amount and transferred to the ambulance maintenance agreement, $1,295. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to provide funds for an outstanding bill from May of 2014 for cardiac monitoring services. And this was submitted on July 29th, 2015.
Second.
Okay, I'm motion a second to move the interdepartmental transfer of $1,295 to Finance. Additional discussions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes.
A second interdepartmental transfer I'd like to move Subcommittee in the form of a motion and do a first reading on is also July 29th, 2015. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $21,000 and will be transferred from the reserve fund in that amount and transferred to the ambulance capital Skier Power Lift stretcher. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to purchase one striker. I guess a striker-powered...
Striker-powered.
Striker-powered lifter. I think that means automatic.
Is there a second on that?
Some on the...
Yeah, motion a second to move the $21,000 departmental transfer to Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes.
And the final appropriation I'd like to move to the Subcommittee is a supplemental appropriation dated July 24th, 2015. So I'll do a first reading on that. The amount requested is $45,000 and is to be appropriated from capital stabilization in that amount and appropriated to the Park and Rec Office. The amount of $45,000, the amount requested, be used for the following purpose, to provide funds to purchase new office space for the Park Department.
Second.
The motion a second to move the supplemental appropriation of $45,000 to Finance. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. Do you want to submit a public hearings yet?
I certainly could. I don't believe we'll need a public hearing on the kennel.
Just on the...
Just on the three appropriations, so if the form of a motion, if I could do them all in one, I'd like to set a public hearing for September 2nd.
September 2nd.
On the two interdepartmental transfers of $1,295 and $21,000, and also a public hearing on the supplemental appropriation, the amount of $45,000 for the Park Department.
Second.
Okay, Morrison, a second for the public hearings for September 2nd in these chambers, 6:15 PM for the two interdepartmental transfers and the one supplemental appropriation. Additional questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes.
And that's it for Finance.
Okay, appointments, Counsel Winnie.
Yes, thank you. We met tonight before our meeting at 5:40 downstairs. We had two mayoral appointments presented to us from our August meeting. They were both reviewed and voted on two to zero, going forth to bring them to the full council for the appointments. So with that being said, I'm going to make these in the form of a motion that the City Council considered to appoint Coney Denham to the East Hampton Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership with her term of expiration of December 31st, 2017, and Marge Prendergast to the PLAe Board of Directors, with that position ending on December 31st, 2016. The PLAe appointment is for the Public Library Association...
Of East Hampton.
Of East Hampton. Okay, thank you. All these little acronyms. So make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Yeah, motion a second for the approval of Coney Denham, East Hampton Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership, and Marge Prendergast, PLAe Board of Directors. Any additional comments or questions? All those, Counsel...
Well, I'm just going to say that I'm really glad that Marge stepped forth to serve on that committee for the Public Library. She is a very strong asset, and she will be watching out for the taxpayers' money that does go into the support of the library, of the Williston Memorial Public Library. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Sure. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes.
Thank you. I would like to, at this time, move the new mayoral appointment that we have in New Business to Appointment Subcommittee Meeting for, to be brought up at our next meeting on September 2nd.
Second.
Okay, motion a second to move to appointments, Beth Tiffany Nashwannick Pond Committee. Additional comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes.
Thank you. And just for public information, Beth Tiffany is my first cousin, so I have asked that the two members for the Appointment Subcommittee Meeting be there to vote on that. I don't think that there would be a direct conflict, but for being open government, the way that we are, I just wanted to make that announcement. Our next Appointment Subcommittee Meeting will be held on September 2nd at 5:30, which is just before our City Council meeting downstairs.
Great, thank you very much.
And that's it, thank you.
Ordinance, Counsel Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. On last Tuesday, the 28th, we met with the Planning Board for a joint public hearing on home occupations, and we found a couple things, some language we wanted to tighten up. So we are actually going to reconvene that joint public hearing and combine it with the joint public hearing for rezoning the R5 to downtown business on August 25th, and that's at 6:00 PM downstairs.
It's actually going to be up here.
Oh, it's going to be up here?
Okay.
I was just told. So one quick housekeeping thing before I move on to set some public hearings. It looks like I need to get an extension on the fire code update, and I'm setting a public hearing for that, so I guess I'm going to ask for an extension that takes me to September 2nd, because that's when we will deal with it.
Thirty days.
So I'll just say 30 days. So I'm going to put that in the form of a motion, please.
Second.
Okay, motion a second for a 30-day extension on the fire code update. Any additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes.
We did, at our last meeting, we did Counselor Smith and I, and Counsel, I believe Counselors Ziegler was there. We looked at the over-quota licenses, and one of the things, Counselor Smith had some great ideas, it looked like one of the things we're looking at is focusing those over-quota licenses towards target areas, the receiving zones, basically. And one of the areas is the mills, and the other area is Cottage Street.
Ferry?
Well, ferry, that'd be great. But we're basically looking to try to fill a gap between, actually, Union Street, I'm sorry, between Cottage and Main, to try to find a way to connect town and make it more cohesive. And because of that, since my wife is opening a business in one of the mills, I'm going to recuse myself from that, but I fully trust Counselors Ziegler and Counselor Smith to take this one and run with it in a very positive way. So just that being said, I do have a couple of public hearings I would like to set for our next meeting. One is the fire code update. So in the form of motion, I would like to set a public hearing for our September 2nd meeting to review the fire code update proposed by the chief.
Okay, motion a second to set the public hearing for September 2nd for the fire code update. Any additional questions, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes.
I'd also like to set a public hearing for the request to amend the zoning of 119, 121 Main Street from R5 to downtown business.
Second.
I can't do it.
You have to wait until after that plan.
I was hoping to help these guys out, but I... Okay, we can't set it now.
Yeah, because you're meeting on the 28th.
Because we're meeting before, then.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so I can do it.
Be optimistic.
I am trying to be optimistic, I'm trying to help these...
You have to have their decision, though.
Okay, so I'll make sure that we have their decision.
Just continue the meeting.
But I do want to try, this is kind of a tough thing, it's holding up their business right now, so I want to try to move this along. So I would like to set a public hearing for September 2nd for the rezoning of 119 to 121 Main Street from R5 to downtown business.
Okay, motion a second for set a public hearing for September 2nd for the rezoning of 119 and 121 Main Street. Additional questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes.
The final one is I'd like to set a public hearing for the amendment of the CPA Committee, Chapter 2, Section 2-72, for September 2nd.
Second.
Okay, motion a second to set a public hearing for the amended city ordinance of the CPA Committee, Chapter 2, Section 2-72. Additional questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes.
That concludes my report.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Can we go back to public safety?
Did I skip... No, I didn't skip. I did skip you, I'm sorry. I was thinking of, yes, public safety, Counsel Hayes.
Yeah, I wasn't going to use the word skip.
Exactly.
Could we go back?
Back, right.
So, updates, the request for the street acceptance. We met last week, and we need to go back out there with Jim Gracia and take a look. There were a lot of waivers that were done, we got this half off, we're kind of getting conflicting information. We're really trying to get this sorted out, because the Conservation Commission is putting up some signs. I'm going to meet with the people in the Subcommittee today, so we can come up with a couple of dates that we could meet out there. Jim Gracia would like a few to choose from, so if we could just come up with that, that would be great. And I would like a 60-day extension on that, please.
Second.
Okay, motion a second for the 60-day extension of Paul Street Extension, Julian Estates. Any additional comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes.
And regarding the review of the street acceptance protocol, that has been dropped off with the Planning Board. We're just waiting for their feedback to take it to the next level. So I would also, in the form of a motion, ask for a 90-day extension on that.
Second.
Okay, motion a second asking for a 90-day extension for the street acceptance protocol. Additional discussions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes.
This concludes.
Well, thank you, I apologize for overlooking there. Property Counselor Derby, are you on to property, too?
Yeah.
Would you mind handling this property?
Yeah, thank you, no report this evening.
Actually, but there's one more. If you don't mind, there's a new business.
New business, all right. Well, then, I will.
The easement.
Pedestrian bridge.
Okay, I would like to move the pedestrian bridge at 15 Cottage Street to property.
Second.
Okay, motion a second to move the request for easement for 15 Cottage Street pedestrian bridge to property. Additional comments or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. I believe we have gone all the business, so I'll entertain the motion adjourn.
Second.
Motion a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain?